I will call to order the November something, 19th. Oh my goodness. Monmouth City Council meeting and have Phyllis, our city recorder, call the roll call, please.
Counselor Belz.
Present.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Here.
Mayor Koontz.
And I am here as well, so we'll do the flag salute. And Counselor Carey, can you lead us this evening?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to welcome folks in the audience tonight and let folks know that, again, we are coming to you live, streaming on Facebook, and I'd like you to know that our talented videographer here, Zach, also freelances. I was actually at a conference for two days this week at the Salem Convention Center, and there he was. He was an audio visual whiz there as well, helping out, so thanks, Zach, for your assistance with us. And let folks know that comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Citizen Comments. If you wish to speak to the council, please fill out a comment card and turn it into the city recorder at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review the issue. However, mayor or councilors may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication and if so, what avenue is preferred. And thank you all for your attendance at this meeting of the Monmouth City Council. We start off with usual, with our consent calendar. We do, in this month, we review the regular meeting minutes and the work session minutes of the prior meeting, which was the meeting of November 5th. Those were in your packets, so I'd either entertain any corrections that were uncovered or a motion to approve.
I move approval of both.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, that's one thing off the agenda. We will take care of those minutes. We'll start off our reporting this evening with the mayor's reports, and I just have one thing. I received communication that I want to read to you, and this came from the fourth grade class at Monmouth Elementary that is headed by one of our master teachers there, Cheryl Najar. And the letter is addressed to dear Mayor Koontz. "Monmouth has a problem. Every day, kids as well as adults are risking their lives to cross Highway 99 at Church Street, on foot, bicycles, scooters, et cetera. Drivers are not paying attention to the painted crosswalk strips. After school hours, there is no crossing guard, and the yellow lights don't flash. We need a better crosswalk. One good reason for a safer crosswalk is that a lot of kids cross at that intersection. Another reason is that we need to prevent accidents involving pedestrians. We also need to keep crossing guards safer and help them do their jobs." And this is a novel solution, they propose. "A cheap and easy way to save lives is to add a 3D crosswalk. This is an optical illusion that is painted on the ground at the crosswalk. It looks as if the strips are rising out of the ground. It tricks drivers into reducing their speed, which makes the community's children safer. We hope that you will accept our proposal and try it. We want to see safer intersections all around town." And I got signatures from each of the students in the class.
Yes, here, here.
And many of you will be happy to know that some of them are in cursive, because I know there's a concern that that's a lost art. And there actually is enclosed an article out of the Scholastic News magazine in October, which is a story of some students, some youth, who did go to their city leadership and advocate for this, and so the students included that. So I have, I want to thank the students for letting us know of their concerns, and again, we really like it when citizens come with a solution, not just a problem. So I appreciate that. I've actually spoken today with our Public Works Director, Russ Cooper, and we'll point out, as we always do at this, at these discussions, that because that is a state highway, we don't get to make the decision. However, we can certainly speak to people who can make those decisions. So Russ and I will be contacting the Oregon Department of Transportation, see if we can get one of their engineers or specialists out from our region, and maybe even we will all go talk to the students at Monmouth Elementary about this and about some of the things that we can do to make our city safer. Thank you very much, Mrs. Najar, for sharing that with us, and for Russ, for helping me out with that. We'll be in touch.
There'll be more discussion on that issue with the work session.
There, we will have discussion.
I'll be bringing.
Right. Okay. And we certainly have a lot of good information about that crosswalk, so. We now go on to our other reports of council representatives of boards and commissions, and I'll start off with, get my couple out of the way. The Arts and Culture Commission met last night, and we had a quorum, and that was with one person missing.
Right.
And tonight, we have the opportunity to appoint even two more people to the Arts and Culture Commission. So last night, the group got to greet one new member and start talking about some things. We're going to get, hopefully, a couple more, and got some great ideas brewing for you, so I'll be bringing that forward. My other liaison is to WIMPEG, our public access channel, and I have a meeting scheduled on Thursday with Tom Pessimer, the City Manager of Independence, Counselor Jennifer Ransfrom-Smith, who is their liaison, and Janet Schnard is going to join me, because those two councilors and city managers don't know much about WIMPEG and how it's operated, and we've been the fiscal sponsor for all these years, so we're going to kind of catch up on what WIMPEG is, how it's funded, what's the value to the community, and, other than just making our videos available, which is pretty important.
Will that be a public meeting?
We're meeting in Tom's office, so it's not going to be noticed as a public meeting, no.
I see, okay. So people who want to know more about what's happening there, how would they do that?
Well, I'll report back.
Okay, okay.
Oh yeah, no, I'll be reporting on it. So that's what I've been up to, and Counselor Belz has the library board. I know they've got stuff going on.
Thank you, Mayor Koontz. Yes, the library board met earlier, not this week, but last week, and let's see, the library is partnering for the fourth year with CASA of Polk County. They'll be hosting a CASA giving tree from November the 15th to December the 20th. Donations of new unwrapped gifts will go to kids in the Polk County foster system. The library is also a donation site for the Windermere Coat and Blanket Drive through December 18th. They're looking for donations of new or gently-used adult-size jackets and twin-size blankets. Those will go to the warming centers here, right in our own community. All-Ages Winter Reading Challenge, now through January 10th. Sign up before December 6th. All-Age Decorated Gingerbread House Contest. Submit your entries by December 7th. All patrons can vote on their favorites, December 10th through the 14th. Use your imagination. Last year, I believe, the house that won had a meteor that hit the roof, so it was very well done. There will be a holiday-themed iris folding class taught by none other than me, December the 10th, Tuesday evening, 6:00 to 7:30. These classes are free, limited sign up, but please come, it's a holiday-themed event. Secondly, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Friends of Monmouth Library. That is a separate group. They've been doing a lot of great work. They are made up of community members that support and publicize library activities for the community. They do fundraising, and they volunteer. The Friends Board is currently looking for a couple new board members, and if you're just interested in helping out with the Friends, their membership dues are only $20 a year, so anyone that lives in Monmouth is welcome to join our group.
Thank you.
There you go.
And Counselor Carey, Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Planning Commission met last, two weeks ago, I guess, in several discussion regarding planning for the Hoffman Meadows, the Hoffman development out there, with quite a bit of discussion regarding traffic and school impact and a variety of other things, but it was all, it was all good. The report, as I recall, was that the Dalton Project is underway over here on Main Street. That's progressing. The wetlands issue on the S-curves have been mitigated or resolved, at least, and then there's, there are some, I think there's an item on our work session or perhaps here regarding amendment to the zoning code. We meet next on, tomorrow night, and that's going to be discussion about the acceptance of the housing needs analysis that we've, you know, it'll come back to us for ultimate approval, I believe, but, but there's going to be discussion on that, so.
Yeah.
That really concludes it for me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Roxanne, you also had Historic Commission, could have done-
I'm Roxanne in this, not Counselor, okay.
Yes, you are, apparently.
So the Historic Council actually did not meet last month, however, we will be meeting in December, and I have been told that one of the things we'll be talking about, which is very exciting, is the celebration of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, which is the right for women to vote, so we'll be talking about that for next year.
Great. All right, and now Counselor Schinkel with the Parks and Rec Board.
Thank you. I was not able to attend, but I did receive some meeting notes, and the meeting, the bulk of the meeting was spent reviewing the master plan update for the parks. Steve Dew, the consultant, said that the plan is about 80% to 85% complete. Park conditions are in pretty good shape, minus a couple of deficiencies that he noted. The next steps are that the board members are encouraged to send additional comments to Suzanne, who will forward them to the consultant, and they'll prepare an updated draft, which then later at a council work session, we'll discuss and review that, so the Parks master plan is moving forward.
Great.
Big thanks to Suzanne.
Okay. Thank you. And we have community announcements coming up, lots of activities this time of year, I'm sure to share.
I have a couple.
Thank you. Counselor Sharmar.
I would like everyone to know that the little city down the street, also known as Independence, and the Polk County Master Gardeners of Independence Inspiration Garden have been awarded one of 44 Ginkgo tree seedlings, which arose from a Ginkgo tree that survived the atomic blast of Hiroshima almost 75 years ago. They will receive the tree next year in commemoration of that horrific event, and the Monmouth Independence Rotary Club will be planting a peace pole there as part of the display under the tree. A peace pole is, we are establishing them all over the communities, and it's a four-by-four white pole that says "Let Peace Prevail on Earth" in eight different languages. And also, speaking of the Monmouth Independence Rotary Club, the club will be hosting a Thanksgiving potluck on Thanksgiving for students at Western Oregon University who, for one reason or another, are not able to go home for Thanksgiving, so if you'd like to be part of that, bring a potluck dish to the senior center at noon on Thanksgiving, and you can join us, and we could really use somebody who knows how to carve a turkey. So thanks for that.
Oh, great, thank you. Yes, sorry.
So, again, in the little, the little town down the street, in Independence, on November the 30th, there will be two events for people that like arts and crafts. One of them will be at Indy Commons, and there'll be a number of local artisans there selling their wares, as well as across the street at the Elks Lodge. There will also be a craft show there as well, and I'll have a table at Indy Commons.
Okay. And Counselor Silbernagle.
One as well. So the Monmouth Independence YMCA has their Christmas party and fundraiser on Friday, December 13th, at 6:00 PM, and tickets are available at the Y.
Great, thank you. And we want to get everybody warmed up for the tree lighting, even though we have another meeting before then, but we are looking forward to Friday, December 6th. We'll start off with the parade that the college students put on, Parade of Lights, that starts here at our library and heads toward the university, and they're followed up by a certain gentleman in red suit on a fire truck typically, and we do the tree lighting and great, good words of wisdom, I'm sure, as well as some caroling, and then lots of great activities afterwards. So I'm not sure everybody realizes that afterwards, adults can go to the gentle house and enjoy some music and good cheer. Families can head into the Warner Center, and there are crafts and treats, and it's going to be a great evening, so looking forward to that. And then that Saturday is our Making Spirits Bright. It's a cont annual event with lots of great activities, and they have a website and a Facebook page that outlines that, so we'll have more about that. Counselor Carey.
Sort of along some of the similar themes, I would say that there's a play running at Western Oregon, It's a Wonderful Life, a version of that. Dr. Cant Neely is, it's his last directorial performance, not widely publicized off-campus, but, but they're always good and fun. And then for people that have been around the community for a long time, Dr. James Kirk has, is offering what he claims, and stake it in the ground, it's his absolute last show. James Kirk is a longtime artist. He's a professor at Western Oregon, professor at Oregon State University, sort of large-format watercolor. If you don't know him by his art, you'd know him as the tall gentleman, angular gentleman that rode around on a three-wheel bicycle for years. He's a dear friend of all of ours, and that show is at Bush Barn, and that runs through Christmas Eve, so at the Bush Barn Art Center. So I would, you know, I, James is one that, you know, he's said that before, so let's hope it's not his last, but if it is, it would be worth the time.
Absolutely. Yep, we are very fortunate to have, have him claim us and us be able to do his work over these decades, so. If that's all for announcements, I would like to entertain the appointment of these two particular community supporters to the Arts and Culture Commission. Judy Phipps is a local artist, and she is fairly new to the community, but she is interested in not only promoting visual arts, of which she is involved, but also she has had some ideas about some activities, and this is one way she saw it, to get herself involved and engaged in the new community. And our other applicant is Jeanette Moore, and some of us have had the opportunity to already work with Jeanette in other community endeavors. She manages the Washington Federal branch here in town. She has sort of some experience with arts activities, including an art walk and some other things, and she's kind of looking at ways to get some community engagement going, as well as bringing some attention to all the amazing things that we do have here, so if, if-
I nominate Judy Phipps and Jeanette Moore to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Sharmar and seconded by Counselor Belz, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you very much. We will be in touch to welcome them to our committee, and as I say, lots of fun new things to come out of that. All right, and that's where we get to be quiet for a while and turn it over to staff, so interim city manager, Chad Olson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Just a couple things. The city recorder did report out, I think it was yesterday, that the PSU population estimate is 9,920.
Good, that's okay.
Apparently, we're trying to hit that 10,000.
No, we're, we're okay. We're just under it.
I'm sorry.
There's goodies if you're under 10,000. Lots of goodies up there.
So, and of course, with the 2020 census, the numbers will be trued up after that's completed. We did complete the negotiations with the FFA regarding the city hall project, and just to outline what the work product would be for that is, this second phase is what's called the schematic design phase. So what they'll do with that is they'll work on plans, elevations, sections, and come up with, develop two renderings of what the city hall would look like. Do a little bit more work in detail regarding the square footages, but they've already done, gone through the adjacencies and things like that. There's, would be a total of seven meetings. Three of those would be community engagement, some type of down hall meeting, to engage the public with the process, and a big part of that will, after the two renderings are completed, and the city will select a preferred option, and with that, the architect will develop a reliable estimate that the city can use as it moves forward and pursues financing for the project. The cost for that is totals $55,000 for that work, and that is $54,000 for the contract and an estimate of $1,000 for expenses not to exceed. That's a not-to-exceed number. Plus, there's three, usually for these projects, you'll have three related work items to go with it. Survey for the property to ensure that the architect knows exactly what the box is that they're working within. A geotech report in order to determine the, just to make sure the buildability of the ground, if they need to do any additional or more robust putting, say, for example. And then typically, you want to do some type of site assessment, a Phase 1 site assessment is what we call it, where they will do some preliminary checks on the environmental, if there's any environmental hazards. I think in reviewing that, what I would do is just go with the site survey at this time and try to keep the number to $60,000 for the, for the work, and then after they're completed, because I, I would be surprised if you have any, any real obstacles or constraints related to the site as it relates to Phase 1, environmental hazards or the geotech report. You'll have to do them, I just don't know that it's necessary to do it at this point in time. The, the process is going to take six months, so you would expect to see the final report to the city council in May of 2020. It'll be dependent on how, you know, how quickly things go, so it could be a little quicker or a little longer, depending on how quick turnaround times are, especially the, when you include the robust community engagement piece, that'll take a little extra work on city staff's side to set those up, get them scheduled, notice out to the public and things like that, but at this point, we're anticipating May 2020. And that's, that's all I have with that. Other than, and I haven't, I haven't talked to the mayor about this, but for this type of project, giving, given that at the end of the six months, you'll be looking for financing, I think it would be advisable to consider it an ad hoc citizen advisory committee to work with the city through that phase. I've talked to staff about that. I've used that in the past, I find it advantageous for a number of different reasons. So if you kind of just plant that seed, and we can circle back maybe at the December 3rd meeting, if you're interested in that, and then I can talk to the mayor about it also. So I'll pause there. Any questions related to that?
So if there is an ad hoc citizens committee put together for financing city hall, and we don't get the schematics for six months, which would be, any bond issue would go on the November general election?
That would be, I wouldn't be prepared. November would be an option, but it would be a pretty short turnaround time to hit that. You'd probably be looking at-
Okay, so the following May, then?
Yeah.
May of 2021?
That would be my guess.
Okay. It's always, seems it's always a good idea to have, if you want a bond issue to pass, to put it on a ballot when, where everybody's going to be interested in voting.
Yes. You know, ideally, you would be looking at a November during a general election for-
So maybe even wait until November of 2021?
That would be an option for the council to consider.
Of course, that's an off-year as well.
Right, yeah, that's not a-
Okay.
But, and also, so even though it's going to be six months, you will, I assume, as you did with the first phase of the conceptual planning magnitude of costs report that they did, you'll, there will be a touch where they'll come in, and they do have a couple, they'll have at least one meeting with the council. They're not going to just pick the preferred option for the rendering, for example, so there will be a report back at least halfway through.
Yes.
I missed the, a lot of the discussion on that being gone, but how will the public meetings be sort of spaced? Will they be after the, will that be information gathering in terms of what kind of city hall would you like, or would that, or would it be distributed through the process?
We haven't, you know, worked out the schedule yet, but what, what I've seen in the past is one at the front end to collect community input. It can be regarding a lot of different things, the community, culture values, just different things like that. And then a mid-return, say after a selection of the preferred option for the rendering, maybe then you go back out and say, here's what we have as far as the preferred options, kind of reporting back to the community, and then at the end of the process, where you have the completed full, the full rendering with the cost estimates, and you kind of report back on the results.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions about that? All right.
And just to update the city, so we're currently evaluating proposals for the executive search firms. City received eight. The committee is currently completing the evaluations. That should be done tomorrow, so I'll have a, I hope to have a composite of the scoring by Thursday, maybe late tomorrow afternoon, and then depending on the results of that will kind of tell us where we go next. We've reserved November 27th for interviews, given kind of the scheduling, and we're pushing our schedule in order to get a recommendation to the city council for the December 3rd meeting. So a fallback position at this point would be to delay the interviews, if required, until December 2nd, and complete them on the 2nd, and basically report back to the city council on the 3rd, the next day. But the target date is December 3rd with the recommendation.
And that will only be typically if you have several of them that score sort of closely? If there are some clear, easy, easily identified leaders, then you typically don't have to do an interview, correct?
Correct, and the RFP specified if required, so, you know, if one firm rises to the top and there's clear separation, then, you know, there would be nothing to prevent the city from moving in that direction. But again, I'll know more about that over the next couple days.
Again, thank you, Counselor Silbernagle, for serving on that review process. Eight, eight seemed good to me. I was surprised we got that much attention for somebody who wanted to do the work for us, so feel good about that. So, anything else?
Nope, that's all I have unless there's questions. Nope, that's all I have unless there's questions.
Just wondering if there's been any response, we do this from time to time, to David Melton, he's the fellow that was wondering about the signs down in that Maricord area, are we, anything started towards him?
The Public Works Director has been in touch with the, with the citizens, Melton, Mr. Melton, yes, and has scheduled him to attend a, I think it's a traffic safety, traffic safety committee first week in December, and then he'll make the request and talk to him directly about that, and then we'll see what happens after that.
Good, good work, good work.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And now, we do have time for citizens and comments, I'm going to mention one thing, we have changed our business agenda, one of the items on the agenda, the ordinance amending Monmouth City Code regarding trespassing, and that seemed to be a little more potentially complicated, it hasn't been looked at in 20 years or something, so it felt like an item we might want to have a little more discussion on, to do here, so we've moved that to our work session agenda. So if anyone was here to speak on that, that will, can either make comments at this time or be available during the work session to hear, but we're not going to be making a decision on that tonight. And our speaker that we have, just sort of on an off topic, would be Joshua Brandt. So Josh, if you could join us at the table and state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name's Josh Brandt, I'm with Brandt Sanitary Service here in Monmouth. I service Monmouth and Independence, of course. Good evening, Mayor and councilors, thanks for having me. I'm sorry I didn't get on the agenda, I know typically, I'm an agenda item, but I figured it's that time of the year that we probably at least start the conversation. I had my dates a little wrong, and, you know, man, I'm a little unorganized, but getting better. So I thought it'd still be a good time to come in and chat, see if we need to discuss further or get on the agenda for the next meeting. So I was just going to kind of give a brief overview of the recycling market, I know that's been a concern for the community. And then we can go into more detail with that, I know only have three minutes, I do have a few kind of bullet items, maybe upcoming events, ideas, things that I'll discuss at the end, so, thanks for having me. I had a great chance to have a meeting with Mr. Olson the other day, it was a wonderful conversation, so I thank you and appreciate you taking the time out to have that conversation and get me kind of prepped and ready for this evening. If any of you have questions while I'm chatting, just interrupt me, it'll be easier for me that way, because I can get off on a tangent, I talk about recycling a lot lately. So of course, that's a tip, the topic of conversation. We implemented a surcharge, it looks like, I believe, it started June of 2018. We discussed that we would have a conversation every six months since then, we implemented a $1.90 surcharge at the time because of the market. Again, I don't know what we can discuss tonight, I know that moving forward, for the most part, I'd like to continue that, there's several reasons for that. The recycling market turned a little bit better, let's say about eight months ago, and by better, the costs were still fairly high for me, I want to say it was about $65 a ton for our co-mingle. It has raised up above $100 now, back up to 109, and when we discussed about, what was that, 18 months ago or whatever it is now, it was at $121 a ton, so we're about up there again, unfortunately. Some of the reasons for that, again, I've discussed before that we have a community member that is a big part of Garden Services there in Salem, Clay Warner, I talk to him on a regular basis, he's a wonderful resource for me. Right now, just to throw a few stats out, right now, for them, they are spending about $35,000 a month hauling garbage out of their recycling center. So the contamination numbers are obviously still extremely high. Because of those numbers, they've had to do, they've had to lay off employees, which of course, makes it a lot harder to separate material, which doesn't make any of our markets much better. So they're still having a difficult time getting rid of, or finding the appropriate market because they're still having to deal with a lot of contamination. That's where it's at. In our conversation, my conversation with Clay, it didn't sound like there was going to be much change from that here for the next year or so. You know, I'm pretty optimistic, I hope in a couple of years, we figure out a better program, maybe sooner. Right now, we're just having a difficult time. So part of my suggestion is, is if there are questions about what's recyclable or the process of doing it, I'm more than happy to chat about it. I know than the conversations I've had before, people don't like that certain things aren't recyclable. I just have to remind the community, it is not me or Brandt's making that decision. I am number one, here for my environment, making sure I do the right thing, number two, here for my communities, and then, of course, number three, I have to make sure that I am running my business as best I can, and that's being here for the community. So, you know, it's, it's, I know it's a difficult thing to hear, but it isn't me making the decision, I, part of it, I have a processor that I have to take my material to. Some people then ask, well, what if we find a different processor? That is always an option. However, very difficult to find it at a cheaper price. So it looks like if there's other options we're interested in looking at, I am here, I'm more than happy to listen, I'm more than happy to meet on a regular basis, I'm more than happy to figure out what my community needs. However, there is going to be a cost associated with that. So that's kind of a brief overview. One of the new major issues is typically for cardboard, which is a viable commodity for me. As of six months ago, I am no longer receiving any dollars for it, it is now $0 a ton, and I take roughly 60 to 80 ton, which translates to over 100,000 pounds monthly to Garden Services. They have a facility that's big enough to backstock that, they do their best to find the appropriate markets and get rid of it, it is not looking good. What's happening is the mills and everywhere have an abundant supply of the material, very difficult market to deal with, so for the last six to seven months, I've received $0 for cardboard. It creates some issue, of course, for us, we, we've been doing this a long time, recycling's a big part of it. You know, again, whatever the community is interested in doing, I'm more than happy to listen to, it's something we want to continue to do. Where we're finding some issues is we aren't, with our Polk County ordinance, I'm actually not required to do cardboard in the county. However, we've been doing this a very long time, and we try to do the best we can for our community. So we've been having some issues with that, just because we, we do have some recycling out there that we've just offered to do on kind of a good faith, I guess, thing. So running into issue with that, because then that cost obviously arises, I've mentioned with DEQ that issue, and it's something that we are going to look at if we continue to do so, charging for it unfortunately. Within the cities, of course, that is not in the ordinance, so that's not the thing, I just thought it'd be good to update overall for what I do. One other issue is, I'm not sure if everybody heard, but batteries was a problem for me about a month ago, we stopped taking it, there's a reason behind that. What happened was, in a few meetings of mine, they actually classified that as a hazardous material, I'm not capable of holding on to that, I cannot transport it. However, through further discussion with DEQ, the metro area hazmat team, they've actually come back and said that it's okay for me to take it now. So what they were worried about is because I pick it up as a household material, but I then store it, I become the generator of it, and at a larger amount, then it becomes a little bit more of a hazardous problem. So it becomes, it's a difficult thing for me to take and store and kind of deal with. Again, one of those issues for that is because Polk County has nothing in place for that, Marion County does, but some of, some of those programs aren't offered in Polk County, so again, in order for me to get rid of that material, Polk County is actually going from two hazardous waste picks up, pickups a year to one. So now we have one time a year to get rid of that material, which makes things a little more difficult for me. So, that's a, kind of a slight update, do we have any questions so far? I know I'm running on time, so I'm trying to-
You talked about Garden Industries has a problem with contamination in the recycling materials, what kind of, what does that mean? What is, what's contamination in their definition?
Well, basically, anything, you know, and we've laid, laid out a flyer, basically for plastics, we're looking at jugs only, that are marked one and two. I know this is difficult because there's certain things that are marked one and two that aren't jog, jugs or bottles, those we cannot take right now. Again, that's not my decision, that's my processor's decision. We're looking at, for plastic, jugs and bottles only over 12 ounces, anything less than that. So for instance, every pill bottle, yogurt containers, all of those are too small, but not to mention, the larger yogurt containers, those items aren't recyclable anymore, again, the market does not allow it. So all of those plastics are part of that $35,000 a month to get rid of it. It really is only ones and twos. To go back to another stat, mixed paper used to, you actually used to get some money for it, Garden Services in the last two years has seen a decline in that, where they used to get $90 to $100 or so to process it, they're actually, it's costing them $500 a month now. So again, it's, a lot of these recycled materials, just, there's not a market for right now. I have had a question by community members about what they're doing to do, find the markets, there's, there's a bunch of committees that are out trying to find the market, the problem is to figuring out those markets, part of their job as processors is to find those markets, and they don't exactly tell you everything, because part of that allows them to get rid of that material that they're getting on a large amount. So, you know, some of those conversations are hard to have, I know that a lot of people are working hard to figure it out, but again, you know, people bring up to me all the time that a place on the east coast is doing this and that, which is great, the education side of that's wonderful. Again, if my community's interested in me in sending a long haul truck to the east coast, we can figure out what's associated cost for that, but, you know, for me right here, Polk County and what we've got around, we have, do have some limitations for what we can do.
I think education, and you hit on it, that's a key, so people can know what they can and what they can't.
Yeah, you know, and one of the things too, you know, shredded paper, for instance, when we bring a shredder to, you know, we bring that to our community cleanup, that's the time to really utilize that, I know that people don't like to store that themselves. However, what happens if you bring me shredded paper, what's it come in, a plastic bag? That's garbage, I still have to sort it and do all of that. If they don't bring it in a plastic bag, because it's shredded, everything that's sorted at a recycling center is on, done by a conveyor belt, but it's also tossed up these, I'm going to call them augers, but it's more wheels, it's all done by weight, that all falls on the ground, what they do is push that out, it ends up getting compacted as garbage and hauled out. So it's figuring out programs that are best for that, to be able to handle a recyclable material, but again, not a program in Polk County for that. I don't have a baler to haul that, if I hauled it in a garbage truck just myself, again, I have to push it out onto the ground, it's, it's not an option. So that, that in particular is one, egg cartons again, that used to be a product you could, however, in order to get this all kind of together and to get these contaminations numbers down, because people will crack the shell, put it back in, again, that now makes it not a recyclable material. Again, in that conversation, it could be eventually, I don't know that, that question, but for right now, to get those numbers and to find the markets, they have to say no, because that is an item that is typically not disposed of appropriately. The other is pizza boxes, I've had plenty of conversations with those. Again, some companies will put the wax paper in there, but again, that is not recyclable, so that needs to be taken out. I would say I throw two yards or more of garbage away out of my cardboard bins and more out of the recycling bins daily, and the majority of its pizza boxes, and I would say 80% of them still have half the pizza in them. So, you know, those are, those are all part of the problem, and again, that's why, you know, our best step is to, you know, examine what we can take, do that well, do your due diligence of making sure you clean out and dry the materials that are acceptable, and then we can try to get the market under control. That's our best thing. Again, this is, we're step one in the whole process of this material moving anyways. I take it clean, it gets dropped at a processor, a processor finds a middleman, that gets hauled to another area, I mean, there's a lot of things going into it. If we can do our part, which is the first part of it, step one, it's at least doing a better job. Now, I will tell you, I do get a sample size, they have not done this in about a year, it is a sheet that every once in a while, when you take a truck to Garden Services, they will sample it, what that means is they will check it for contamination, what's going on, they'll give me stats on it. For the most part, I've had as high as numbers as 12 and as low as numbers as four, so we're pretty good. On average, I would say we sit just under 10% as a community, which actually isn't that bad. That's pretty good, so we are doing things well. Again, the problem is, it's not just us, that's the part of it, it's, you know, it's two or three counties that are taking possibly, there's about eight haulers that head into that area. So though we have concerns, we're still doing our part somewhat, we just need to do a little better at it.
I recently found that you can make yogurt quite nicely in a crock pot. So if you can take a glass container or something and go out to a dairy farm and come home with some milk and make your yogurt in your crock pot, you have no waste. What, what would you say is your number one problem in terms of items that are thrown in the trash?
Well, I would say pizza boxes for sure, and then you're looking at basically what you would consider a clamshell, a to-go container, because if you really look at even the big box stores like Costco, which a lot of people shop at, those apples come in a plastic bin, and I can't remember the number on it, but pretty easy to throw that away. Every cupcake you get from, from Roth's or another grocery store, all of those are just getting thrown in. I mean, somebody had a conversation with me about frequency for picking up, we should pick up recycling more often, and I said, understandable, but now that we take about a third of what we used to take, the two weeks should be plenty in a 95 gallon reciprocal for those items. I mean, I would be extremely surprised if you were going through that many of the right plastics to get rid of. Now cardboard does fill those pretty quick, I know people don't, but I also have a 24-hour recycling center that nobody in the county, nobody in Marion County and nobody in Benton County have, so I'm one of the few. They actually, DEQ does not encourage that, to be honest, we stick with it because we've been doing it a long time. But those items tend to be big, yogurt, I mean, it's a pretty large number of three through sevens that are still recycled daily, not to mention they're dirty, like a Swiffer broom could be considered plastic, that's not even close to something that can take and recycle, that's in quite often. The pottery, whether they're small or large, black bins for if you get a tree or something, those are dropped off regularly, again, not five gallon buckets, not, it's not something I can take. You know, we had discussed before about plastic bags, Roth's will take them back, other places have taken some back, I don't know if that policy's changed now, the some have just gone to bags, but there are programs possibly out there, again, a lot of them are in Marion County or elsewhere. I suggest I could try to do a better job, that'll be on my agenda for the next year to lay out maybe a few more resources to find those places that'll take things. But styrofoam, another simple one, people buy TVs all the time, extremely affordable, every time, there's literally just two pieces of styrofoam, huge box, styrofoam's always in it. So, you know, again, I'm not, I'm, we're more than happy to work, we're more than happy to do our job, but again, part of that is, is, you know, I think there needs to be some responsibility from us as, as community members and making sure we do it the right way as well, especially something that's simple, it's pretty easy to take the styrofoam. Most people are, I understand, are trying to control their costs of their, based on their income, I totally understand, and styrofoam takes up a large piece of your garbage bin, I understand, I just don't know what to tell you. So, I mean, we offer three different sizes of garbage cans, and there's probably one that'll fit everything you'll need. So, are there any further questions about that?
Hopefully, this is an easier question. I've seen on the Facebook, on the chat group, a number of people have said, gee, where can I get- where can I get moving boxes? And someone will say, get them from Brant's, and someone will say, no, you can't get them from Brant's, so.
So technically, because that is a, used to be a profitable item for us, uh, it is not encouraged to take it from our recycling center. Um, I don't know how to answer that. The best way, to be completely honest, um, just because currently, right now, there is zero dollars, zero market for it, um, other than, you know, safety, uh, for the community member, I don't want people jumping in and out. Um, however, if it can help out a community member, I look at it as that's helping out a community member at the same time. Again, I can look further into that, but before, we were making money off of it. So it was something that is worked into the system that helps kind of control the rates, it keeps us where we need to be, um, on a small scale. It happens, uh, quite often, so.
Thank you.
Um, as you mentioned, we'll be hearing more from you. I know that we'll probably be getting a staff report, some more discussion about this and about the surcharge and...
Correct.
Yeah, so, um, we'll report back at the December meeting.
That's what I, I figured, we'll do our part, we'll set up a meeting. Um, I do know, just to bring up a couple of things, I know I got to get out of here. Um, I did end up going to independent city council last week. They had mentioned, again, I don't know if they've chatted, I, I don't know how this works, I'm just heard, uh, that in March, there's a fifth Tuesday. Uh, they mentioned trying to do a joint city council meeting that day, um, and they discussed possibly having me as a main kind of item on that. Um, I am more than happy to come in and be a big part of that conversation based on if we want to have a longer discussion about it. Um, again, I'm here for my community, we've been doing this 70 years, um, I'm interested in seeing it hit 100, and then I'm sure that my children will like to see it hit farther. So, we'll do what it takes. So it's something to think about, uh, feel free to let me know, um, if you need me at more meetings, I am more than happy to come to every one of them if you need me, but, uh, most of the time, people typically say, we'll, we'll bug you when we need to. So, um, again, if there's no more questions, uh, we'll come back, Mr. Olson and I'll meet and we'll get on the agenda and have another discussion, so. I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, we don't have any other citizen comments before us, so we will move to our business agenda. We have a few decisions to make this evening, and the first one is presented by our finance director, Janet Shinnard, about our, an opportunity that has not come along before, and we don't know when it will again, but the state is offering some incentives to employers to help offset future costs of PERS, our public employment retirement system, so Janet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counselor members. Uh, as I've mentioned at the last two work sessions that we've had, uh, we do have an opportunity, it has its pros and its cons. Um, it is a, it is an opportunity or a chance to, uh, take some one-time, uh, money that we have in, um, additional carryover from our fiscal 1819 budget that we did not anticipate. Um, I am, at this point, recommending for, uh, to take forward two applications, um, on December 2nd for, uh, an economic incentive fund contribution, uh, two contributions. The first application that I'm recommending, um, relates to, uh, 100,000 of that 150,000 in carryover from the general fund and then matching per rata shares from the other funds that would actually, uh, bring the total to 100, around 168,000. That number changed slightly from the last work session because I trued up the, the payroll numbers, um, from the budget and, uh, and the building fund was able to contribute a little bit more, so that was nice. But the 168,000 then would, um, be contributed very shortly thereafter, uh, assuming, as soon as we found out that our application was accepted and we got our 25% match, um, and before December 31st in any event, so that we could get the, um, the employer rate, um, uh, adjustment that we anticipate with that contribution. The second application, um, I, we played a little bit more with the numbers and, uh, at our last work session, you know, we talked about topping it up to the full 1.2 million that we have available, uh, that seemed a little bit too much pie in the sky. We can still do that if you want. Um, I honestly do not believe we will have anything close to that. I'm not sure that we'll have anything close to the 500,000 that I'm, um, that I am recommending that we apply for as a secondary application, uh, but I'd like to leave us at least a little bit of, uh, room, should we, should we, um, be able to figure out an allocation that would work, um, in, in that regard or, or something close to that. And so, that just basically would tie up some match for us so that we would, uh, you know, optimize whatever we end up deciding, if anything, through the budget process. So that would be, as I said, an application at the same time, a second application, that would involve getting an actuarial estimate so that we could take an immediate rate, uh, relief, um, after we do a contribution in the July to August timeframe in the new fiscal year. Um, and again, we would decide on that amount through the budget process and it could be anything from zero to, as I'm recommending, uh, 500,000. Um, and so, that, um, that number has been programmed into, uh, my little table that I have given you before. I've also given you the, the minimum 25,000 that we have to, just to give you, um, some playroom, if you will, um, between what you could decide to, to go under that. And you could obviously, um, opt for, like I said, something greater than 500,000 for that second application, um, or frankly, something greater than or less than 168,000. But I wanted to bring that decision forward and just remind you again that, you know, the pros of this opportunity are that, uh, the state is giving us a 25% match. A lot of other entities who, um, are very seasoned in looking at their PERS unfunded actuarial liabilities as well as their ever-increasing rates are making this leap. And thirdly, because, I mean, it is a mechanism for diversifying our, our holdings, our, um, investments, if you will, because PERS has a little bit more of a longer reach as far as what it can do with its investments. And the obvious cons are that that is something, is one-time money, um, that we could use for some other purpose, um, and we have other purposes always, um, including, um, a new, uh, city hall coming down the pipe as well as other capital projects. So, um, with that, I would take questions.
And again, just a reminder, this, this application deadline, there is a deadline, so we can't really put this off, um, but what's happening is employers from fire districts and school districts and cities and cemetery districts, if they have employees, are putting in a placeholder to try and get matching funds. And the state is telling us regularly, well, there's, there's, you know, there's not a lot matched left, right? So if you put in, um, you've kind of got a placeholder, you may get the 25%, you may not eventually get the 25%, but by the time you have to make that actual decision, you'll know better. Because they're creating this window where you go in and put your hold on. So, it'll, it will be a fluid and shifting situation throughout time, but doesn't cost us anything to apply, um, at this point. Uh, so, having that on hold and be able to potentially use some additional state money to offset future rate increases is the purpose here. Byron, Counselor Schinkel.
So, I'm, I'm still a little bit fuzzy on, on this. So the first contribution, assuming we, we make this decision, is, is this a prepayment of our obligations? Is this, this, these numbers that we're voting on, just an accelerated pay scale? I mean, are these, will the, the money that we put in now offset the money that we're obligated in the future? Does it count towards that number?
Yes, is the short answer. So, so what I'll say is that, um, the contribution goes towards lowering our employer rate, um, which on an ongoing basis means our costs will be lower in the future.
So...
It goes into our side account.
There is a new side account established, exactly. So they hold those funds and the appreciation rate on those funds helps offset the costs that they end up applying to us for an employer rate, for a cost for our PERS.
So what's, what's our obligation FY 2021 for PERS generally?
The total dollars that we would pay? Um, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared. I would guess it's in the range of around $2 million.
Okay, right. And so this would be in addition to that $2 million, or this would offset the $2 million?
This, in the, in the biennium, in the, and very, in the next biennium, 2021, 22, will cause it to be less, will cause that amount to be less than it would have been absent that contribution.
Okay, so it does offset...
But it's not dollar for dollar.
It's not dollar for dollar, it's an offset, right. Because it causes the rate to be lower.
Over the life of this program or whatever, the long-term number is greater than what we put into it.
The earnings potential on this money increase, it, it's just more money sitting there earning interest for earning, doing investment earnings to be able to offset our, what we owe for employee pensions.
And so looking at that, it saves the city 390, $390,000 over 14 years, which comes out to what, 27,000, 27, 28,000 bucks a year?
Right.
To really make this worth it, we need that second investment to bounce that number up much higher.
The second, the second investment would definitely make a, a much bigger difference.
So, if we do the first one, it kind of, I wouldn't say it obligates us because we can always...
Yeah, it doesn't obligate us whatsoever.
It behooves us.
Yeah, it does...
More than behooves us. I, I would say it's not...
Oblivates us.
Yes, it, it highly motivating us to, to, because that's where we want, that's where we want to be.
Well, I would say, I would actually not say that. I would say, um, if we don't do the first investment, that does not stop us from doing the second investment. We could make the decision to not go ahead with the first investment and just wait and do the second investment. Um, and that, and again, depending on what number you choose, we would get return from that as well. It would just increase our, our estimated return, if you will, um, if we do more, obviously.
Right.
If you put more money in, the more money you put in, hopefully the more money you get out of it.
And the market cooperates.
And the market cooperates, amongst other things, yes.
This is not risk-free money we're putting aside.
Right.
But this time, we get to take risk on our money, plus 25% of it that the state's adding in, if that money is available.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I move that council direct staff to make two applications on the earliest permitted date of December 2nd, 2019, or as soon as, soon after is practical in December of 2019, to seek 25% matching funds from the state of Oregon as follows. One application for a city contribution of 168,634 dollars by no later than December 28th, and a second application for a city contribution not to exceed 500,000 dollars by no later than August 1st, 2020. That's the longest motion I've ever had.
Second.
Oh, the only thing I'll ask, because it's clear enough that this is for the PERS EIF, Employer Investment Fund, or do we have to specify that in the motion?
That's a great question.
Yeah, well, I think the record will make clear that that's what it's about.
All right, moved and seconded to set this money aside in our minds and potentially in the PERS investment account, depending on the application and the success thereof. Questions?
Is the, the 168,000, that, and, and I, and I read this and I, and I've read it a time or two and I'm still, Byron and I are sharing the fuzz on this one.
It's PERS, it's okay.
Um, is that effective for the, um, like...
Not immediately, it's for the next biennium. The, the, the next biennium rates will be impacted by this investment if we make it prior to December 31st, if we make the contribution prior to December 31st.
And then, and then, oh, so, so both of these then would ultimately be applied in 2021?
The, the second one could actually be applied sooner. We would get an actuarial valuation once we had a number that we felt comfortable with. We would get an actuarial valuation and then that would tell us what the savings would be as of a date specific, which could be earlier than the 2021 biennium.
And would that entail both of the amounts?
No, just the second amount. So the first amount, it, so, so we would have had an opportunity, um, had we done another actuarial evaluation much sooner than now, um, to, uh, make that first contribution effective more immediately. But we didn't do that for a variety of reasons, um, which I can go into if you want, um, but so, about now, our time, with the time that we have left, in order to make the contribution before December 31st, our only option will be to have that money impact the next biennium. However, the second one, because we're making it after January 1st, we can do, we can do another, we'll have time to do the actuarial evaluation and then have it become effective on a date specific before the 2021 biennium starts.
The actuarial evaluation is PERS requirement to be able to apply it sooner.
Now, um, and, and you're, you're providing a 14-year savings estimate, um, does that suggest that there's a spend, I mean, do we spend down that investment that we make? Interest, principal and interest over a 14-year period?
No, no, it's, it's in a side account and it, and it earns money and it goes to, it is held there in our side account and until such time as...
But that doesn't go away, that continues to be...
Correct. Yeah, it continues to earn, yes. And I should mention another logistical element, I will be bringing back a supplementary budget. Um, so on December 2nd, I will, uh, push the button for the applications, all things being approved, um, and then on December 3rd, I will bring back to you a supplementary budget to actually create the appropriations for the contribution so that that can happen before December 31st. So again, I'm just doing the application piece on the 2nd, and then I will make the contribution with appropriations, um, after that date.
And are all these, uh, side accounts in, in this program lumped together at the same...
No, they are not. They're, we will then have three separate side accounts because they're all valued differently.
Oh yeah, no, no, but, but, but anybody participating in this current, um...
Oh, I see what you're saying, correct.
The pool...
Correct. Ours, ours will, ours will not be commingled with anyone else's.
And, oh, it will not be?
No.
And then, do we choose the investment, uh, risk? Do, do we change the, the risk of the...
No, we, we don't have any control over that. It's all within the auspices of PERS.
The Oregon Investment Board does that for PERS.
Sure. Well, they, they've got a pretty good track record. The concern, of course, is, is, is that we're a high, you know, about, we're a record-high market at the moment. And, um, so, so that's, that's the only caution, but unlikely the state's going to provide a 25%. Well, thank PERS for having, you know, a good, uh, investment record, um, but unlikely to get that 25% match, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's, is for you. Other questions or comments?
I'd just like to comment on, uh, the uncertainty of the future that, uh, Counselor Carey, uh, brought up, and that, um, what, what gives me at least a little peace of mind in the, um, you know, in, uh, in moving forward with this, is that 25% match that the state's providing. If it was just playing the, uh, playing the market and putting it into a side account, I'd say it's probably something that's an easy pass. Um, I think we, you know, we all know, uh, we all know what gambles can turn out with, but with that match, hedging that, I, I like that match and I want to go get it.
I will say that is one of the reasons that I didn't bring it forward in time that we could have done the actuarial evaluation until it became absolutely evident to me that the 25% was going to be available and that they would not make you contribute whether or not you knew you were going to get the match. I didn't think it was worth your time. So I do, I agree completely.
Yeah, which, that, we weren't sure, this was an evolving program. All right, I don't see any other questions, uh, so all in favor of the motion to make these two applications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you very much, all right. That'll be exciting. Like some kind of survey monkey thing or something to the applications. All right, so now we move on to a couple of items, and Suzanne, we have our community development director to talk to us about, um, a couple of, uh, things that have been on our agenda before, should look familiar.
Right, yeah, this should sound familiar. Good evening, uh, yes, we do have second reading of the ordinance to adopt legislative amendment 19-04, and this would, um, pass amendments to the... And this would pass amendments to the Monmouth City Code regarding short-term rentals and amending our list of approved street trees. So we've gone through the code adoption process with several sets of public hearings. Our most recent ones were held in October. First, we had first reading at the last council meeting. This second reading, if approved, would actually adopt the amendments. And they'd become effective 30 days after adoption. And again, this will create a legal pathway for short-term rentals, subject to certain standards. You'll see, our following agenda item is discussing the registration fee for the short-term license. So that's also related to the adoption of this. There are, there's a sample motion on the second page of the staff memo, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
We would be adopting ordinance number 1387. And if there are no further questions, I entertain the motion.
Well, to frame the, any discussion, I'll move the second reading and adoption of ordinance 1387, an ordinance adopting legislative amendment 19-04 amendments to Title V of the Monmouth City Code and Title 18 of the Monmouth zoning ordinance relating to short-term vacation rentals and street trees.
Second. Moved by Counselor Carey, second by Counselor Sharma. And yes, now we can have some discussion. If there is any.
We've had quite a bit of discussion.
We've had a little bit of discussion on this item.
Fairly well-vetted.
I'm just doing my parliamentary procedure job.
Well, and I think that, I, I think there's been movement on this based on citizen input and comment. And once it became, you know, clear, then there was information provided back to the planning commission, and they worked hard on this. And Suzanne, of course, has been the shepherd of all of this. So I think it's been a good process to get to where we are. And it may not please everyone, but, but that might be okay.
Yeah, this is that delicate balance between protecting the rights of some property owners and other property owners, their ability to use their property and how that all balances out. So I agree. It took a lot of good discussion, but I think this is a great product and hopefully something that we can get implemented and going, since right now we have a lot of frankly not authorized short-term vacation rentals. And we have potentially some street trees that are causing us problems. We want to get those fixed as well. We always short-shift the trees on this discussion. All right.
All the questions?
Yes, I am. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, roll call, roll call, roll call.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Belts.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Sharma.
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
All right, so ordinance 1387 on the books.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we'll get some...
Thanks to the planning commission.
Oh, I will, absolutely. And we'll be sure to get information up on our website and share in community notes to try to spread the word on the new ordinance adoption.
Yes, you have the January community notes for that.
Yeah, we have an article.
So the second piece of that, we actually, in the ordinance, talked about having a processing fee for some of these. And so that changes the fee schedule, which we have adopted in the past. And this requires a resolution and another roll call by us to add a new fee, so...
Yes, great, thank you, Mayor, for that introduction. Yeah, this would add a $25 fee, that's a one-time fee, for the registration of a short-term rental. The only time that would expire and have to be paid anew on a particular vacation rental would be if the dwelling changed ownership, then the new owner would need to apply. So I just want to clarify that. And then if a short-term rental is used for more than 45 nights and it's not hosted, we discussed previously, that goes through the conditional use permit process. So we already have a fee for those, so we didn't need to amend that, so... With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
See any questions? This would be resolution number 1892 to adopt the miscellaneous administrative fees presented.
Move to adopt resolution number 1892, a resolution amending the city fee schedule to include a short-term rental registration fee of $25.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Schinkel, second by Counselor Belts, and a roll call, please.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Sharma.
Yes.
Counselor Belts.
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Right, thank you very much. Get folks signed up on that, and that fee will let us know where these are so that we can make sure folks are in compliance and keep in neighborhoods. With that, we are down to any comments, councilor comments? If anybody has anything about something we've discussed tonight or other items?
Chris, go ahead.
I, in doing, doing a little bit of just background researching, Googling on things, I came across a, a report based on national data that Monmouth is the fourth safest city in the state. And I just wanted to congratulate our, our police department and our community for fostering such an incredible and safe community to live in.
Okay. Thanks.
Just a, we talked about street trees.
Yes.
And I dropped by the library the other day, and this is just, you know, put a scratch in your trickle file, Russ, I think. But in the parking lot, there's a tree in sort of an island in, in the parking lot, right adjacent to the entrance, that is really, boy, it's, it's, it's nearly, it's dangerous to park in that spot. The little extruded curbs have been displaced. There's vaulting on the, you know, on the asphalt itself. And those were probably planted before, you know, we really became real, you know, sort of aware of this sort of damage. But, you know, and I don't know whether it's, whether there's any point in removing it now because there's already damage done. I'm not sure. But it is a bit dangerous getting in and out of your vehicle. And certainly just doing, there might be two there that are problems. So it'd be worth a drive-by, it'd be worth a check. I'm just passing that on. I'm not sure what the trees they are.
Yes. If some of the ash pour, could get them. Okay, thank you. Any other council comments? Then we will adjourn to our work session, and we'll go ahead and take a seven-minute break. I need it back table. Thank you.